Started. Who are we missing?
Uh, so far Melanie, Craig, Richard, Nicole, and Virginia.
Oh no, Virginia's here, okay.
Is that VM whatever VM whatever is. Gotcha. Yeah, I'm watching the participants list looking for new people.
That's okay, okay, well, um, I mean, we can get started at six oh five just to give.
Did anybody tell you that they were gonna be absent this evening?
No, just. So not anyone person. Not any of the board members.
And anyone who's not speaking, could you please mute your microphones? Thank you. Melanie's here now. So we're missing Craig, Richard, Nicole.
Okay, I'll text them. I will text them and then we can get started. Okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order at six oh four PM on June second. Uh, thank you everyone for again being on time being here today. Uh, I know we have a pretty long agenda, but I'll try to get through it even though. You know, the Padres already played today, so I know no one's running off anywhere. Um, does anyone have any changes to the agenda before we get started?
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, under the consent agenda, it says forty seven forty two and it should be forty seven forty one.
Got it, yeah, thank you. Mm hmm, slip of a finger. You can't have even an odd on the same side of the street. Thanks, Jane. Um, are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, Nicole's in, awesome. All right, Craig will be here in five minutes. Um, do I have a motion to accept? Um, and with this, we'll also accept the consent agenda and the approval of project.
I'll move to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda.
Thank you, Jane. Do I have a second? Thanks Newman. But thanks, um, okay, Tracy, will you, um, please call the roll?
Uh, Melanie.
Here.
Chris. Chalubski.
Here.
Thank you.
Our here is so a yes for in favor of approving the agenda with the consent agenda.
Uh, Anthony.
Here and yes.
Uh, I'm, I'm obviously here and I vote yes. Uh, Jane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Craig here yet? Nope. Richard here yet? George?
Yes.
Andrea?
Uh, here and yes.
Newman? Nicole?
Yes.
Virginia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Minutes. Good, yeah, um, does anyone have any suggestions for the minutes? And then I'll also say, Mr. Amber, I believe that was your project that we just approved. Hi, um, John, our former chair of the Ocean Beach Planning Board is here with us today. Uh, I will go ahead and fill out Form six twenty for you tomorrow morning and send that in. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Have any modifications or changes in minutes?
I have something.
Yeah, I had three minor edits given to me by George. The, uh, on page one, I changed, uh, schedule to scheduled where, uh, Teddy was talking about the peer community forum. Um, on page two, the community board questions about how many detox beds. Um, it wa- it said intern instead of interim, so I changed it to interim. And, uh, there was a, on the last page, um, there was an if instead of it on, uh, we all want to see it come back when we were talking about the peer. So those were three edits sent to me by George. I've already made them. Um, who else?
Kevin?
Yeah, one of the, I think Koda's report mentions, uh, sexy streets.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, um, there was also something in there about learning, learning the effort on the street vending. Um, that should say leading the effort on street vending.
On Koda's stuff?
Yes, it was some, I think it was responding to some of my questions.
So I'll just make a note to look for, it says learning, but it should say leading. Okay. Okay, I'll make that note. Okay, anything else? Like typing.
Awesome, do we have a motion to accept the minutes with the proposed changes?
I'll make that.
The minutes with the proposed changes.
Sold.
Jane, and then I heard someone else that said, I'll make that motion, so we'll just count that as a second. Was that Melanie?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, awesome. Uh, I'm good with voices, but not with faces. Uh, huh, 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 okay, so moving right along.
Do we wanna?
Representatives report, so as I mentioned.
Do you wanna take the full vote?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Okay, uh, Melanie, you seconded, just so I'm assuming you're gonna say yes. Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
I say yes, Jane voted, I'm so, you're gonna say yes. I should change your mind in a second. Um, Tom?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Is Craig here yet? Nope. Uh, Richard here yet? Nope, George?
Yes.
Andrea? Newman? Hello Newman?
Yes.
Uh, Nicole? Virginia?
Yes.
All right.
Richard has joined the meeting.
Richard has just now joined the meeting? All right, cool. Thank you.
Hi, Richard. Did you have any, we just voted to approve the minutes, uh, did you have any changes? Are you good with that? That Tracy sent out the draft minutes?
Good afternoon, I don't know what you just said, but, uh, yes.
We just approved the minutes, you're, um, okay, great, thanks, Richard. All right, so as I was saying, um, Teddy and Koda both were not able to come to the meeting tonight. Um, I will not hazard any guesses why, but you can text me separately and ask if you want. Um, but Koda did send in a report, so the parks, new parks master plan actually came out today and I will make sure to send it to everyone tomorrow and have it out on the website, so we can all look at that. And I'm also sure it's on the city, uh, the city's website, so if you wanna Google that tonight, that is out. Uh, he had a, a long update on the franchise agreement, but the franchise agreement that Mayor Gloria negotiated was passed. Uh, uh, the tenant, I'll just read what the agreement was. The tentative agreement, uh, it provides nearly three billion in revenue to the city over twenty years, including unprecedented bid payment from utility shareholders of eighty million dollars. Um, seventy electric, ten million gas, the highest city in the US has ever received. Twenty million to advance the city's climate equity goals, ten million in solar energy rebates and historically underserved neighborhoods, and energy cooperation agreement which focuses on environmental and greenhouse gas reduction benefits, safety, equity, and reliability, all while centering on the needs of historically underserved communities. There will be biannual audit audits by independent auditor included, as well as the creation of a citizens-focused franchise compliance review committee, which ensures public engagement on energy matters. The tentative agreement includes an initial term of ten years with a potential for a ten-year renewal. The city council may terminate after ten years for any reason. Uh, the city council approved the, all this with a vote of six to three. Uh, and with, uh, the two amendments, have SDGNE pay half of the twenty million in climate equity contributions within the first five years of the agreement. Uh, and SDGNE officials appear before the city council once a year to explain its rate, which are, as we all know, the highest in California. I know, I just paid my bill today, uh, making, so moving on to the budget, the May re- revised of the mayor's budget made the following additions. Uh, libraries to be reopened for services seven days a week. The second phase of the city's pay equity study. Salary increases for most city employees to make their pay more competitive with other local agencies. So that was the budget, and then the final update is on the OB Pier. The pier was partially reopened Friday, the twenty eighth, and OBTC had a thorough town hall last week. Uh, it is, I think, up on their Facebook page, so if you did miss the town hall, please go ahead and go to their Facebook page and give it a listen. So that was the updates from the mayor's office. Uh, as I mentioned, Teddy didn't send me any updates from council's office, but if you have questions for either of them, uh, please reach out directly via email. Okay, and we do have a new representative with us, Reed Cole. He will now be, uh, representing Senator Tony Atkins' office. So Miller is, uh, no longer with us, he's still alive though, I saw him walking his dog on Newport a few days ago. So he's doing well, I'm sure he just got a promotion. Uh, but Reed, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you for any updates, uh, from the senator's office.
Hey folks, uh, yeah, I'm really happy to be here right now. Uh, brand new representative, uh, like Andrea said, uh, so I'm just gonna mainly cover over, uh, budget updates right now. The budget's really big, uh, up in the state, um, so, uh, right now, the legislature's more or less come to an agreement on the budget, but there still is some final negotiations going on, uh, before the June fifteenth deadline. Budget's expected to pass, but there's a lot of big, uh, lot of big proposals in the budget that I'll just quickly go over. So, um, biggest thing that to note is that right now, the state of California is experiencing a record surplus. Uh, it's projected that we're gonna get around a hundred billion dollars, uh, for a surplus, and that's including federal aid too on top of that. Um, the big proposals, uh, laid out in the budget so far, uh, one would be, uh, universal TK or transitional kindergarten, that's expected to be across the whole state and will provide, uh, four-year-olds and, uh, young children love the transitional, uh, pathway to get into kindergarten. On top of that too, there's also, uh, proposals to make debt-free college a reality in our state by expanding our grant program for, uh, lower and middle in- income, uh, students. Uh, there's also a record amount of, uh, uh, revenue, uh, invested into homelessness. Um, right now, there's still, um, it's more or less in, in line with the governor's proposal, but there's still some, some talks about like what the, that final number is. Regardless of what it's gonna be though, uh, there's billions of dollars that are, are planned to be invested into homelessness. On top of that too, there's also, uh, uh, plans to, uh, provide, uh, more relief to small businesses that help recover from the COVID nineteen pandemic, also more relief for, for renters to help pay back, uh, bills that they may have missed, uh, during this pandemic. On top of that, there's billions of dollars invested into, uh, drought mitigation, uh, and wildfire resilience, uh, as well as broadband for all across the state. Um, in addition to that too, I'll just quickly go over some of the bills that Senator Atkins, uh, has moved over. Um, as I moved forward onto the assembly, so the first is SB nine, which we'll cover later on in this meeting. Uh, that just passed Senate in a bipartisan vote, uh, last Wednesday on the twenty sixth, so now it's moved over to the assembly. Uh, Senate Bill one is the coastal mitigation bill that the senator authored. Essentially, that'll provide additional resources. Uh, part of what it does is it provides additional resources to local governments through grants to help prepare for sea level rise, for climate change. That also passed in a bipartisan vote, uh, la- on, uh, Monday, the twenty fourth last week. Uh, and, uh, that moved over to the assembly as well. That'll go over to the, uh, Natural Resources Committee. Uh, that's all I have for the time being, but I'll post my, uh, my email address in the comments and then also post the newsletter too, if you're interested in getting updates from our office. And feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions.
Thank you, Reed, and welcome to your first meeting. I do have a question about the grants for colleges. Is there any talk, uh, so how, I, I guess my first question is, how are those distributed out? And then is there any talk about, uh, also tying those grants to possibly a few years of service, uh, for the state or anything of that nature?
Not that I've seen, um, more, the, the main part of the proposal is expanding the Cal Grant Program, uh, to include, uh, just more aid generally with students, but, uh, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Senator Tony Atkins' office? All right, wonderful. Um, we are gonna get a presentation about the housing bills that are moving. So if you do have any questions about those, that it will be the time to ask them. Uh, okey dokey. So now we're gonna move on to non-agenda public comment. Uh, I would ask anyone at this time if they are seeking to make a non-agenda public comment. Uh, if you're seeking to comment on anything on the agenda, it's, um, has an, a number next to it, please save it for that number. But if you are seeking to make a non-agenda public comment, uh, please let me know in the chat or you can utilize the raise and function. Give it a second.
Looks like John had a question, did you raise your hand?
Oh, yeah, sorry, John, go for it.
Thank you, guys. Nice to see all of you again, nice to speak with my fellow board members from long ago, hello. Um, I just wanted to give you guys an update on four seven four three Santa Cruz Avenue. This is an existing single-family home on the forty-six hundred block of Santa Cruz with a basement area that was recently illegally converted into an ADU. Uh, the process has gone through, uh, code enforcement and we've asked the enforcement officer to issue the citation. Uh, they did so over the weekend and it's been posted. All this is to say is that, uh, an individual bought a large home, converted the basement into an ADU, um, rented it and started the rental process. Uh, it was reported, but ultimately, the process for going through and getting the coast development permit is up to the applicant. They have from the time it was posted, uh, I believe it was the thirtieth of May. Uh, they have four months from that time to complete their permit process, uh, for the building permit and the CDP. So as you maybe all know, um, a CDP process typically takes about twelve months or fourteen months. So, um, it's unlikely that this individual will be able to secure a CDP in that four-month timeline. Um, but I'm just informing you of what the code enforcement official told me over the phone. I did not respond via email, did not provide any more information specifically as to how they're taking action on this specific item.
I got a real quick one on that, if I may.
Yeah.
What was the, uh, turnaround time for code enforcement on that one, John?
Uh, they were approximately six weeks. Um, but I believe we reported this back at, uh, March and it was unregistered. So the first time they registered the report, it was in April, and then it was finally committed, uh, completed at the end of May. So about, uh, about six weeks.
Thank you, thank you for reporting it, and then also thank you for looping me in on it. Um, it's certainly not surprising, but sad to see. Uh, but thank you, John. Okay, do we have any other further public comment, non-agenda?
Basically.
She'll be home soon.
Oh, if you're not speaking, will you please just remember to mute your mic? Okay, so I don't see any non-agenda public comments, so we're gonna go ahead and move into the, uh, first action item, which is forty-six thirty-six Del Monte Avenue. Do I have the applicant for that project present?
Yes, hi, Stephen Borden.
Hi, Steve, welcome. Uh, we're gonna, you should be able to share your screen, do you see it at the bottom? Steve?
Yes.
There we go, okay, perfect, we see it, you're good to go. You now have the floor, and then after his presentation, we'll open it up for board and public comment.
Okay, so the drawing that you're looking at is the existing house, uh, on Del Monte, um, with the garage, this is this existing house where we're converting, um, to a ADU unit. Um, and this is the, the present configuration, we're not altering, we're not adding, we're not subtracting. We're keeping the house exactly, uh, the way it is. Um, these four images, um, show exactly what the house looks like. Um, the only thing that we are adding is to the garage, we're adding a deck, which you'll see a little later on in the drawings. So the garage, which, um, if you're looking at the north elevation, um, that roof, that smaller roof, uh, the lower roof from the main house will turn into a, a deck, a viewing deck. And will only be, uh, from the ex- top of the existing roof will only be about a foot higher than what you see. The house is typically, uh, it's a white cement plaster building on all four elevations, has an asphalt shingle roof. And as I said earlier, even the railing system, we're keeping exactly the way it is with the shutters and the whole, in the whole bit. The only thing that we might add is a white roof uh, to go with the white building. The, uh, this existing ADU represents seven hundred and eighty-four square feet. The garage is two hundred and fifty-five square feet. Um, you can see the backyard in the south elevation, that's where the two proposed units are going. This is an area, aerial view of the existing house, which is white, and you can see the deck over the garage. The proposed two units are rep- this is a, a roof plan, so it, the blue is the solar collectors on the roof. Um, and you can see, uh, there's basically a, uh, close to ten to twelve foot, uh, space between each of the buildings. Um, the foot, the footprint represents, um, sixty percent open space and forty percent of footprint. So the idea was to, uh, try to maintain as much open space as possible. This is on a fifty by one forty lot. Um, the FAR was, uh, point seven five, which would equate to, um, would give us, um, the lot is six nine nine three. The allowable FAR is fifty-two forty-five, our proposed FAR is forty-five forty-nine. I'm gonna show you the picture of the images of the proposed units in the back first, and then I'll present the drawings. From my level from the street, um, this is about what you're gonna see. It's, uh, the buildings that are in back of the existing house have a lower profile and in, uh, will, the only thing that you'll see basically is the roof, uh, eve and the, uh, roof line. Moving towards the, uh, east elevation, looking west towards the ocean, the, the buildings are, um, are, are, you know, the roof line is angled to thirty-three degrees, which is the solar orientation. We've, um, the materials are distinct. The materials are distinctly different than the front house purposely to not only break the bulk and scale, but to, to change materials on each elevation. The gray represents a kind of recycled barn wood and the, uh, kind of light beige or brown rustic is gonna be a Corten metal panel. Looking directly east, you can start to see how the building's broken up with the roof line. Um, and, and basically the scale to the existing house. Again, the, even though the, the back unit, which is the garage, four-car garage off the alley with the unit above, uh, the unit is creating a, uh, the back unit creates a T shape, but complementing roofs again, and, and materials are breaking the scale in this case. This is looking about from the alley, uh, looking at, again, at the east elevation. And here you can, uh, certainly see them. The metal typically, metal Corten material is, is used on what I call the, the north and south elevation or northwest-southwest elevation, and then the wood is used on the east and west side opposing. Uh, looking from the alley, two cars in each garage door. Uh, we, we have a to- a total requirement of five car, five car space requirements, so there's four back here off the alley, and the existing garage in the front ma- is maintained as a, uh, the fifth car. The west elevation basically complements is similar to the east elevation where each of the building is broken up into materials, which reduces the scale and gives it kind of like a little small, um, kind of village, uh, typology. Um, at this angle, you see the, um, the deck over the, the ADU unit. That's a, a viewing deck, and, um, again, as you move back towards the alley, uh, the wood, the recycled barn wood is used on, on the, um, both on the west and east elevation. Alternates then with the Corten material, which breaks the separation of material and scale. Uh, and then towards the back, again, we break, uh, the elevation with, uh, two different materials, both wood and Corten. Uh, the existing house, um, as I said earlier, was seven, seven eighty-four square feet. Um, the, this, uh, proposed site plan, you can see the separation, um, of building and try to optimize the, the footprint of the open space. Um, this is the landscape plan, and, um, we're maintaining the existing trees and then adding, um, both a tree and a, a pervious, uh, surface. Uh, we're gonna use a lot of the roof drainage, uh, the water drainage off the roof onto the site, um, pretty much, uh, almost a hundred percent. Uh, this is the ground level plan, and you can see the four cars off the alley to the right-hand side of your screen. The fifth car is, uh, again, off of Newport, that's an existing condition. Um, the floor plan of the ADU stays exactly the way, uh, which is a two-bedroom house. Uh, the middle, the middle, uh, building is a, is a two-bedroom with a, uh, shared bath. The back unit, um, has both, uh, two bedrooms down below. All the bedrooms are on the ground level, and all the, they call it the kitchen dining and living areas are on the second level. There are some small pick-a bu- pick-a, you know, small views, uh, to the, uh, ocean, which is very small in this case. And as I said, that, you know, we're, we're required five cars as a calculation below two point two five. The third level, as I mentioned earlier, is, is more of the public space, which is living dining. And there's a deck, there's two decks, actually, there's two decks off the center building, the middle building. Um, it's called west and east deck, and then the, the N unit towards the alley has a larger deck of, that fronts on both side yard and alley. And then the, the N unit towards the alley has a larger deck that fronts on both side yard and alley. You don't need to go through the window and door schedule. This is a, this is the roof plan. Pretty much in the third level, there's nothing really new in this plan to talk about. So in the sections, the, the, the buildings are, you can see how they're broken up. The, the existing front building is a, is a one-story, the middle building is two-story, the, the third building is a, is a second story. I don't wanna re-agitate in what's going on, the elevation, because I think the renderings show that. But you can see the materials again, the vertical panels or the Corten, the, the more denser material, the four-inch barn wood is, is, is depicted in a vertical, in, in a vertical direction. East. And north. There is a, there is a deck, which I didn't mention in the renderings, on the back building. The deck is in the center and has an exterior stair, which you can, which is a viewing deck between, you can see the back building between the two peaks of the roof. That's a open rail system. Elevations. Drainage and grading, as I said earlier, a lot of the water off the roof is gonna be drained onto the site. That basically does it. Just to kind of recap, you know, house, house one, house two and three represent forty-five hundred, forty-five, forty-nine square feet. The FAR was fifty-two forty-five. We're about seven hundred square feet less than what we're allowed. And that's, that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Kevin to give us a recap of what was discussed at the project review committee, and then move on to public comment and board questions. If you do wanna make a comment about this, in the meantime, while Kevin's speaking, please either utilize the raise hand function, or let me know that you wanna make a comment in the chat. Thank you.
Hi. So we reviewed this, I guess, two weeks ago at our project review committee meeting. There, the vote was unanimous to recommend approval, but without putting it on the consent agenda. There was some, some comments and questions about the, you know, the, sort of the unique finishes and how that would fit in with the, you know, with the neighbors. There were some comments about, you know, the sightlines impacting the neighbors. And I received one email comment. It was more of, I guess, a critique of the, of three units going on to one of these lots. You know, most of these lots are, are lower density. And again, the vote was four-zero to recommend approval of the project.
Kevin, I see Tracy has her hand up.
Yeah, hi. Stephen, I was wondering, has any consideration been given to the front house at all to match the style of the back house? Like, maybe incorporating some of that wood and metal into the front house so that it doesn't look so incredibly drastically different? You know, e- even just painting it a, a different color to match would at least blend it in? Because it, it, it's like this tiny little, you know, house next to these really modern, modern-looking houses. And it just kind of sticks out like a sore thumb to me. So I don't know if it's been considered at all to try to integrate some of the design of the back houses into the front house just to blend it a little bit better?
Yeah, there was, there was no interest in doing that. I wanted the existing house to be distinctly different. And I, as a traditional house, the back units speak on their own. And no, I don't see any point in painting or trying to match it, because that would, the whole idea of that, of the existing house is to stand on its own. The roof forms of the two back units symbolize a traditional style because, and have a function, which is thirty-three degrees for solar. So, yeah, I, I can't say that I appreciate your comment, because it was not something that we had an interest in. I wanna keep traditional buildings exactly the way they are and let the new buildings speak for themselves. One thing I didn't mention too is that the new units have a rain screen wrapping in the elevation in the roof. This alleviates heat gain. I don't know if you're familiar, the board's familiar with rain screen, but there's a three-quarter inch airspace in the elevation, which is to reduce heat gain. And to create a cavity of which moisture and water can go down through the wall and exit at the base of the building. So that there is a, a lot of attempt to not only make it distinctly different aesthetically, but functionally a sustainable rain screen method, which we have used on, with this owner before, is a very successful way of getting rid of heat gain and letting the buildings breathe.
Thank you, Stephen. I see Chris's hand up next. Chris?
Thanks, Andrea. I just wanted to add to Kevin's sort of summary of the, the PRC. On review of the minutes, I, I wanted to clarify one comment that, that I had discussion during that meeting about, which was kind of what we're talking about here, the, the material choices. And comment was that, that the material choices may be out of character for the rest of the homes in the area. And that wasn't necessarily a critique, but it was an observation. It definitely was not an ad-vocation that everything should be a stucco building. We kind of had that discussion as well. But I do think it's important to, 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 to give some consideration and some relation to what do the surrounding properties look like? Again, we don't want everything to look exactly the same, but, but I, I, you know, I think the discussion that we're already starting to have here a little bit is, is what I was trying to outline in the, the PRC setting. And again, not a critique, I, I'm all for variation. But, yeah, for me, I, I guess my, my inquiry into that wasn't really resolved during the PRC. And I think we just heard the applicant shut it down pretty quickly. And I, and from my perspective, it's, it's important to think about what the other buildings look like on the street. Again, not that we want them all to look alike, so.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that, because, you know, being a local architect and li- living in this area for close to thirty-five years, not only being familiar with Ocean Beach, but living and owning property. Ocean Beach has and will be an eclectic neighborhood. And I think the, the introduction of new materials is just an ongoing design element that can be part of Ocean Beach. But, yeah, the discussion about trying to match the neighborhood, I think, is, is probably not a good conversation to have, because if we all look the same, then why do we do what we do? I think there's a, there's an intention here, and the intention is, is pretty clear. I could, you know, which I, which I've done in the past, I've usually presented an eclectic Ocean Beach, showing you traditional, modern ranch, Spanish, which I think all of Ocean Beach enjoys, an eclectic architectural style that is not symbolically the same.
And I'll just say it again, I'm not proposing that every building should look alike. My comment is simply about giving consideration to the surrounding properties and putting yourself in the shoes of those neighbors that, that are living there and what might be a more seamless transition to different styles of architecture, different material finishes. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Chris. I see George's hand up.
Yeah, I, that open deck between the two buildings, something that I didn't realize the first time I saw the plans, is there the possibility that you're gonna get a reflection off the array from the second building onto that deck that might, at a certain time of the day, might be quite a glare? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Uh, not really. Are you, which building are you talking about, the deck?
It's the deck that transends between the, the, what would be the second and the third building. You've got a guy standing there, and it looks like you have a glass.
Oh, you're talking about the rooftop deck?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, sure, that's a.
On that second roof, would there be a time of day where you might get a glare onto that deck from the array?
Possible?
I, I didn't know if you'd taken that into consid- consideration.
The solar collectors, either being dark blue or some black, don't really produce much of a glare, but there might be a, I'd call a small glare. But the whole idea, I think of the darkened photo, photoated cell array i- is that it actually produces very little glare and to absorb the sun. So I'm not, you know, I, I'm not sure that would happen, but I, I doubt very much. Well, I've done the same solar array right across the street for the same owner. And even though that those are hidden, they don't really produce a, a much glare because of the darkening, the dark color of the silicon.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you, George. I see, okay, so I do have, I'm gonna get to Anthony and Nicole next. I do have one important question in the chat. And, or, sorry, Susan Booth. The architect's set plans, so the plans you presented today show that the existing garage will remain. But there is a set of development plans that show the garage removed. Which set of, she would like to know which set of plans is the one that will be built?
We're showing tonight, and the one that we showed two weeks ago.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. So was that just a previous plan? And upon the parking issue came up, you kept the garage?
Yeah, the fir- the first submission, we wanted to do away with the garage. And I, we later found out through transportation that because we're required five cars, we wanted to leave that garage there for that fifth car. And, yeah, that was, that was right after the first submission. We made that decision, not only with the owner, but with the city.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. All right, I have, like I said, a couple more. I have Anthony and Nicole. I do just have five more minutes slated for this item. So, you know, ask your questions, but in a brief manner, I would say. Anthony, you're up.
Sure, I'm a fast talker. Just to clarify, between the ADU and the first, or the second unit, I, I see a deck there, is that correct? It spans the, over the space between the two units? Like a.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to that view.
Okay, please, I wasn't sure. I just wanted to, because from some of the, oh, there we are, okay, where the gentleman's standing there in the rendering. Okay, so that there, will that deck be that width as well, that depth? Because I see, it looks from the rendering that it goes right, buts right against the, oh, the eve of the, the ADU.
Yeah, it's about a foot away from the existing roof.
Okay. And then, then the, the second building, I mean, I was a little confused as well. There's three buildings on site, right? Proposed, there's the existing.
Correct.
Unit two and unit three. Unit three, the garage is adjacent to the alley. And so the bedrooms are downstairs in that middle section there, above the deck? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct, the bedrooms are on the ground floor. On the second level, there is a, a master bed on the third level, which you're looking at with those two windows on the, on the wood side of the back building.
Okay.
So on the rear building, there's two bedrooms below, a bedroom on the second level, and then the majority of living, dining, and kitchen is on the second level, where that stair goes up to the deck is, yes.
Very good. All right, thank you. Appreciate your help, answering.
Go on to Nicole?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in on the earlier discussion about architectural styles. And I think that one of the things I most appreciate about Ocean Beach is how many different architectural styles there are in our community. I think it's, I think this looks great. I did have a question, though, about the kind of finish that is represented here in the orange. Is, is that sort of like a distressed metal? Can you talk a little bit more about the finish there? I can see.
Yeah, sure, it's.
Go ahead.
It's, it's a four-by-eight Corten metal panel that we, we would like it to rust through time. So it has this kind of orangey-rusted hue, but more to look as a rusting look, just like the barn wood, recycled barn wood would have. A lot of that recycled wood would be distressing and be uneven, as opposed to being a, a color that is constant. The color both in the gray wood and of the Corten would vary on each panel, because they would, it would weather differently.
I think it's very modern and a beautiful building. As a neighbor, probably, I wouldn't be too thrilled about looking at a rusty wall. But I think with the landscaping that you've, you've shown here is a nice balance of, you know, the sort of industrial barn look and natural space. I think it's a very nice building.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Virginia? And do we have anyone else?
I, I, I wanted to say that I, at first glance, it's not really to my taste. But the more I look at it, I, I appreciate the fact that it's not a, a group of cubes stocked up, that, that the roof lines are very nice, complimenting the original building. And even though the surfaces of each building are flat planes without any small articulation, the relationship between the buildings provides some articulation. So it's, as a modern building, it's pretty nice, I think. And with the other advantage that really is that the use of the rainwater and the technology for keeping the heat gain down. So overall, I think it's a nice project.
Thank you for joining. All right, so we're running up on to the time of this item. Do I have any final questions or comments or emotion?
I have a comment.
Yeah.
I, I like the project, because I think it's in compliance with our community plan, where we build in back of the unit in front. And I like the fact that they're keeping the unit in front exactly as it is. And the building in the back, which is on the, is there an alley here?
Yes.
Yeah. On the alley is, is very, very nice.
Thank you, Jane. Does anyone have a motion for this project?
I'll move to approve the project as submitted.
Thank you. Nicole? Okay, wonderful. Tracy, can I call roll? And Stephen, you can stop sharing your screen.
So just to reiterate, we have a, Jane is the first, right?
Nicole seconded.
Okay, thank you. Melanie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
All vote yes. Jane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes, and I hope you keep that railing on the front house to match the rest of the finishes on the front house.
Craig?
Yes.
Uh, did Richard ever show up?
Yes, and yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, George?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Virginia?
Yes.
All right, got us all.
Thank you. And then, um, that vote was, how many were, how many people do we have now versus when we approve the agenda, Tracy? Just for my notes.
Fourteen people.
Okay.
Voted yes.
Okay.
Versus, versus two that weren't here when we approved the agenda.
Got it. Okay, perfect. Okay, wonderful. So Stephen, I will fill out your Form 620 as well tomorrow morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and moving on, uh, we have, uh, sorry, we have Deanna Spence from Tony Atkins' office to give us just a little overview of the different housing bills that are going through the Senate right now. So that way we can know if there's anything that should be on our radar that we should be weighing in on to Senator Atkins' office. So Deanna, I'm gonna give you the floor and then I will open it up for questions from the board and the public. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Um, I hope you can hear me, yes? Perfect. Um, I am Tony's, the district policy director, and I've been with her. This is my ninth year and before then, nine years with Senator Chris Kehoe. So, uh, and I'm a longtime community planning group member in my community of Tirasana. It's fun to watch another group meet. Uh, it's always interesting. Uh, right now, we have a package of bills going through the Senate. And the Assembly has an additional package of housing-related bills. There was a, a decision over a year ago by both houses to focus on what we could do to meet the critical need for new housing within the state. The housing need for San Diego County alone is over a hundred and seventy-one thousand new homes to meet the needs over the next decade. And, uh, when you look at what is required statewide, um, there was a definite feeling in the Senate to put together a package to try to address some of the, um, those needs. So it, they're all on different, uh, themes. The first bill is Senate Bill Five, and that's actually a bond measure that will be put on to the, uh, twenty twenty-two, um, November election. And it, right now, it's a placeholder. It's just sitting there until, um, next year. When, uh, based on what bills do get passed and what new programs to, that are in support of affordable housing and also the missing middle housing for, um, the, the, the working, um, uh, population to try to improve the odds of getting new housing built in the state. So Senate Bill Five is, uh, a placeholder until next year. Senate Bill Six was approved thirty-two to two by the Senate and is currently in the Assembly. It's the Neighborhood Homes Act by Senator Caballero. And it authorizes residential development on existing lots that are currently zoned for a commercial office and retail space, such as strip malls or large big box retail spaces. We've all seen big changes in land use in our cities as some of the, uh, traditional large department stores and, um, home improvement stores, uh, have shut down. And, uh, when we look at places like Horton Plaza and what was done at the University Town Center, where four thousand new housing units were added to the periphery of that shopping center. And a new transit station, um, will be fully operational at, at the end of this year, first of next year. It, it's, it's, except, it's adding on to the options that are available by saying that commercial zones are ripe areas to be converted to housing and to do some streamlining in that process. Senate Bill Seven, um, that Tony authored this year, has already been, um, signed by the governor. It sailed through the Senate and the Assembly. And, um, it was a thirty-four to zero vote out of the Senate and a seventy to one vote in the Assembly. Uh, Senate Bill One, uh, compresses the judicial review period in SEQA so that there's a maximum of two hundred and seventy days that a lawsuit can be filed against the proposed housing development. The housing development has to be, uh, a minimum investment of fifteen million dollars, up to a hundred million dollars in, uh, homes and in the, um, parks and, you know, other development that goes along with doing major developments like that. And, um, the hope is that this bill, which extends, uh, a previous bill that had been in place to help build sports arenas and, uh, stadiums and, uh, large commercial projects by adding, uh, some of the smaller, starting at fifteen million dollars for housing development to give that same streamlining impact. It's a five-year lifetime and then it sunsets. So, um, developers have to start working as soon as possible to submit their proposals to the governor. And the governor has to say that it would be a major economic improvement to a local region within the state in order to approve it and start it through its normal sequence of SEQA review. But instead of having up to two years to file a lawsuit, um, it's compressed down to two hundred and seventy days to file a lawsuit to bring up issues. So, um, that's Senate Bill Seven. Senate Bill Eight was approved thirty to two in the full Senate and is now, um, pending, uh, hearing dates in the Assembly. It, um, continues what was in a previous piece of legislation, Senate Bill Three Hundred and Thirty, uh, which was passed in twenty nineteen, and it extends the provisions of that bill until twenty thirty. It adds clarifying language to ensure that the intent of Senate Bill Three Thirty was to streamline the production of housing and that it meets a local jurisdiction's existing zoning and other rules. No new, um, opportunities to change. It just, it strengthens, uh, local decisions on what is allowed in approving housing projects. Senate Bill Nine is, uh, a hot bill for Tony. There are a lot of stories about what Senate Bill Nine does and doesn't do. Basically, it says that if you have a single-family zoned lot, that, um, you can split that lot into two lots if, um, the result is a minimum of twelve hundred square feet per lot, of which, um, the, the units that would be built, uh, have to be, have to take the space that, um, you have to maintain enough land on those two lots so that only forty percent of the original acreage is still being developed. So you can't like build to the edges of the property lines. You can maintain all of your setbacks that the city normally would have, four feet from the back, uh, four feet between homes, uh, the property line between homes. Um, and, um, those two units could then have an ADU, uh, added to it. So a maximum of four units per property that started as a single-family zoned lot. It's split in two is an option, but it doesn't have to. So you could have two units, you could have, uh, four units, depending upon how large the lot is and maintaining, um, uh, the, um, setbacks that local zoning has. The other thing about that is you cannot use that change in the law, that proposed change in the law in an historic district, and you're familiar with historic districts. So those are, um, uh, you cannot develop in those. You can't develop in a high-fire severity zone. You don't have, uh, a lot of canyons or open space with a lot of dense brush in OB. But about two-thirds of the city of San Diego would not be eligible to use, um, Senate Bill Nine because the map for the city of San Diego, about two-thirds of the, uh, area is in the very high-fire severity zone. And if you'd like to see what that map looks like, you can go to the city of San Diego's website, sandiego.gov. And, um, in the search, uh, facility, you can look for very high-fire severity zone and the map will pop up. And it basically, if you have a canyon in your community, you're part of that zone. And it is defined by CAL FIRE. And the map that is currently approved was done after the two thousand three and two thousand and seven fires that raged through San Diego County, as you recall. We lost almost ten thousand homes during those two fires. My community is entirely with, I live in Tirasana. My community is entirely within the very high-fire severity zone. There isn't a block that isn't. I lost my fire insurance. I now have the privilege of paying sixty-six hundred dollars a year for fire insurance because that map came out. So, um, it, it's, uh, not something that, um, you can build in. And that's existing law that says that. This bill does not add that as a new criteria. Existing ADU law says you can't do that. The other hot bill that's out there is Senate Bill Ten by Senator Weiner. And, um, it is, uh, it says that if you have a, um, a lot that is in a high transit zone area, and it defines what high transit zone is, um, then you can add up to ten units in, on a lot that has the, uh, floor area ratio capacity to take that and still meet your local zoning requirements. So think, uh, the trolley system and think, uh, where, uh, you have existing lots that can be either redeveloped or, um, that haven't been built on yet. And up to ten units can be streamlined in their approval process. Uh, it, the bill was recently amended. It previously said that it had, it could also be in a jobs-rich area, and that's been stricken. So now it is, um, totally transit-oriented. And, um, it cannot be in a very high-fire severity zone. It cannot be in an historic district. Uh, so those basic protections are still in place. It defines a high-quality transit quarter, bus quarter, as one that has a minimum of two bus lines that run no more than fifteen minutes apart. So you, you've got buses all day and all night. And the, you have to maintain the three peak hours between six AM and ten AM. There are actually four hours there. So the city decides which three hours you have to have transit operating. And that's Monday through Friday. And the three peak hours in the afternoon between four, between three PM and seven PM. And then Saturdays and Sundays, you're still required to have double bus service, basically, with two separate bus lines at least every twenty minutes. And, um, it's, that's between eight AM and ten PM, Saturday and Sunday and holidays. So there are very few areas, if, if you ever look at the Metropolitan Transit System and the bus schedules, there are very few areas within the city that have, uh, transit service at that height. Sandag is proposing to implement high-transit bus service and, um, uh, improve the number of light rail and heavy rail runs. And that could open up other areas on those lines for, um, development using Senate Bill Ten. It is, uh, it is basically, um, it sort of implements part of what Sandag is proposing in its Five Big Moves program. Those are, oh, and then we have four more. Uh, Senator Skinner has Senate Bill Two Ninety, um, which was approved by the Senate thirty-three to four. And it allows low-income student housing projects to be developed on, uh, like, uh, community college lands. And, um, it, uh, it makes it more, um, it, it streamlines the process for how, uh, doing student housing can happen. Uh, Senate Bill Three Thirty by Senator Giraso, uh, was just amended this last week. It was, uh, it's being sponsored by the Los Angeles Community College District. It has had no opposition. Um, it's, uh, pending a vote in the Senate right now. It is, uh, also a community college district-oriented bill. The LA Community College District has an urgent need for housing. They have a significant number of their students who are living in cars, who do not, who do not have regular housing available to them. And, um, it, it's sorely needed in their area, and it has strong support. Senate Bill Four Seventy-Seven was approved in the Senate, forty-six to zero. It's waiting to be assigned to committees in the Assembly. It is, uh, it includes, uh, additional funding and direction for Project Room Key, which is, uh, one of the ways we've been facilitating moving homeless off the street into motels that have been bought or hotels that have been bought and to, um, get them shelter. The numbers in San Diego, um, a year ago in April, the number of tents downtown was fifty after the city started an aggressive program, opening the convention center site, opening Twentieth and B, um, uh, area, um, for, uh, temporary housing for the homeless. The state facilitated the purchase of several motels and local hotels. We put people into it. So we had fifty tents last April. This April, when, uh, the Downtown Partnership went out at two in the morning to count tents, there were a hundred and fifty downtown. That, we, we made some improvements. There's not enough. There are still homeless. In Los Angeles, there are fifty-seven thousand homeless, fifty-seven thousand, of which there are beds in shelters for about twenty-seven thousand. The rest are outdoors. And if you've been in LA recently, um, it, it is a challenge. These bills will provide some additional funding and, through the housing bond, that'll be on the twenty twenty-two ballot and through streamlined programs that the bill would enable. Senate Bill Four Seventy- Senate Bill four seventy eight by Senator Weiner. Um was passed by the Senate this last week, twenty nine to five. And it allows the construction of small multifamily projects, three to ten units. In areas already zoned for multifamily housing. By ensuring that artificially low floor area ratio regulations. Do not stop an otherwise allowable project. So what it says is that a local government cannot arbitrarily adjust the FAR. To to say no to this project or that project, you have to meet specific standards. And the final bill is Senate Bill seven ninety one, which is um currently pending a vote. And it creates a technical assistance unit within the Department of Housing and Community Development. That will provide assistance to local cities and counties. To help them plan and finance and build affordable housing on their surplus land. So that would be land that a city or a county has already declared surplus and is available for a project. And that's the Senate Housing Project List. Um it's 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 like a great, you know, aircraft carrier. You're trying to get through the bureaucracy and get across the line. Um but we're doing well so far. Happy to take questions.
Yes, thank you. Uh does anyone have any questions? I don't know if Anthony, okay, because I know I think Virginia kept her hand up from the last time. So we'll start with Anthony, uh and then I saw Nicole's hand, but Virginia, do you have a question? Well, so Anthony, you have the floor. I see you Craig too and Chris.
Great, thank you. Uh and 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 thank you, Deanna, for the comprehensive uh listing. I have a question um regarding the housing bill. One of the early ones you mentioned about for the single residential family home uh lots. And um uh I might, I understand the intent for these bills are to to increase affordable housing. Uh right with throughout the city or throughout the state. Uh one thing that I didn't hear, and maybe you can expand that or or correct me if I'm wrong. Uh I didn't hear any any provisions in these bills or in their synopsis. To to ensure that affordable housing is is being done, meaning that, you know, we've noticed. Anecdotally or through experience that a lot of the provisions for for affordable housing end up getting. Becoming unaffordable, uh either through, you know, vacation rentals or other means. So is there anything to close the loophole to ensure that these properties, if they are taking advantage of these these laws as they're passed? To ensure that there there's affordable housing, increase in the housing stock for those people that currently cannot. Uh live here or afford to live here.
Um I should have mentioned that Senate Bill nine specifically says. That uh short term rentals are prohibited permanently on that property. Senate Bill nine also has language that says this is designed for a property owner. To um add units to his or her property. It is not designed for developers to come in and do speculative um housing projects. You must it to be eligible under SB nine, you have to be the property owner. A city or county can require that for a minimum of one year. Um the property owner must remain on site after the project is done. So it can be required that at least for one year it is owner occupied. And the intent is that this is for the um families. Where they may have multi generational people all living under one roof. We know that's happening now. And it gives them an opportunity to do one of two things. That their family members could be in the ADU that is um constructed. Or in the second unit that is constructed on their property. Um or they can use it to get a rental income um for them, for the family. And provide an additional source of income.
I have, thank you, I I have just one follow up question then. Uh it sounded like your uh the bill allows for the the one year freezing of the use of that property. But that is um that's a local municipal uh ordinance that would have to be enacted to do that, is that correct?
Yes, so the city could make that a requirement that in using Senate Bill uh nine. That uh all the projects would require, you know, the owner to remain um on site. And also there is a prohibition for two adjacent units, two adjacent parcels of land. To um both utilize the benefits of Senate Bill nine. So this is not a thing where suddenly a developer could come in and take over a block. And make make everything, you know, a multifamily situation. This is a a case by case, unit by unit.
Okay, thank you.
And you do have to have minimum lot size, parcel sizes when you're done.
Thank you, Anthony, um I'm gonna go right down who to, I saw Nicole next. Um so I'm gonna go Nicole, Chris and Craig. So.
Thank you so much, Deanna, for that uh great update that you gave. I just had a quick question on earlier in your in your talk, you had mentioned the missing middle. Um can you speak a little bit more to what Senator Atkins is doing to help the middle class? Uh you know, it's just, we're just getting shut out of the housing market. There's a lot of luxury townhomes downtown that are just sitting empty because no one can afford them. Uh what can we do to help the middle class? Get into housing?
Part part of this is if you just take your uh lot and it's large enough to do it. And split it into two units, then you have enough space for a fam. If you end up putting your parents or grandparents into that ADU. Um you know, it 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 it's a unique situation, case by case. There are units in downtown San Diego that only four hundred and forty to five hundred square feet. And those are designed to to meet some of the missing middle um requirements. Uh I I I could never live in something that's small. But when I was in the university, we did. Um you know, it it you cope with whatever you have to deal with, but.
Doesn't work for a family with two children, though, I mean.
I know. So there there are minimum sizes and you cannot have a unit that is less than eight hundred square feet. And and as you know, some of your homes in OB are uh eight hundred to nine hundred square feet.
Yes, I grew up in a home that was seven hundred and forty eight square feet, so I'm well aware of uh of that issue in Ocean Beach, but.
We lived there our first two years of mayor, so um it was a while ago.
Well, thank you again for joining us and giving us the up. I do hope to impress upon the Senator that we do uh need some some affordable housing in our area. As well as housing for the middle class.
It did, these bills do not require, you know, that there's a minimum number of units. Um that are deemed affordable. And that's to give more flexibility to local communities and to the homeowners in how they. Decide to move forward.
Well, thank you Nicole for your comments, um and I'm going to go, I said Chris and then Craig, and then I saw you Kevin raise your hand. Chris.
Thanks, Andrea, and um thanks, Deanna, as everybody else said, I think it was two meetings back. Um we had an update and and I was very curious to know a little bit more about SB nine and some of the other bills you just mentioned. So regarding SB nine, um I understand that there is the minimum requirement of twelve hundred square feet per lot. My question is, um is there, is it, is it, is it a flat rule that only two um lots can be created out of a single one? No matter the size of the originating lot? So if you had seven thousand square foot lot, you could cut that in half, you got two. But if you had eleven thousand square foot lot, you could still only cut it in half and have a second lot. She couldn't create a third lot, is that correct?
Not using this bill, no.
Yeah, okay.
And and the two lots must be as close to identical as possible. In terms of square.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, uh I'm gonna, Craig, you have the floor.
I believe, um, thank you, Diana, I believe um in um. We in relation to Senate Bill ten, that's the one that has to do with proximity to uh to public transit, correct?
Yes.
Um it is there a distance requirement? With respect to the proximity of the public transit line? To uh enable the zone for pro- for that uh legislation to apply?
Uh half, half an hour walking.
So does anybody figure out what that works out to in terms of uh? I mean, I can, I mean, I can walk a mile and a half hour, easy. So we're, are we talking about a mile? I mean, I mean, seriously.
I thought it was half a mile.
I thought it was half a mile, a half hour of walking, um I mean that's.
That's about a mile and a half.
That's a mile, yeah, it's a mile and a half.
Is it walking or distance?
Yes, walking time or distance?
I understood it was half a mile walking distance, like following a grid. Is that not true?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a half mile walking distance that defines a zone that that's eligible for.
Right.
Okay. You know, well, that that obviously poses significant uh risk to massive densification of Ocean Beach.
Well, do you have?
We have existing bus lines.
Two bus lines? You must have two separate bus lines serving that stop. And meeting a requirement.
Well, I guess my question on that seems like, that's what seems like, you know, playing devil's advocate. That seems awfully squishy because since buses are not uh stuck in place like uh light rail would be. So you add a couple, you you add a couple more buses and you fulfill that requirement and now you densify our community. I I mean, it's just a matter of, and the other thing is. Um unlike rail, um is there any provision, well, I mean, assume arguendo. That um the bus lines are established, builders build, the uh units are established. And then the city cuts the bus service. Um the density, the density is gonna remain, right? Because you're not gonna make a, make the people tear down the properties they built. So what's what's built into this to guarantee that? You know, they just don't add bus lines in order to allow the developers to densify. And then, you know, things sunsets and now we got the density without the, without parking.
Um it's not our bill, so I can't give you an in depth answer. I can research it and report back. Uh it's Senator Weiner's bill. But uh he he is from San Francisco, the Bay Area. And and he's doing a bill that um a high transit area like LA or San Francisco. You you generally are adding more lines rather than removing them. And under the climate change uh provisions of what we're going to be looking at. Beginning now and in the next twenty years and what will be allowed and won't be allowed. To try to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Um transit will become extremely essential to meet those numbers.
Okay, thank you very much.
I will raise that with the Senator. And I can report back to your chair.
Yes, thank you.
We would appreciate that, as you know, um Ocean Beach has fought a long and determined battle. To avoid densification and we don't want to give up yet.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Uh but but it also, it's it's also um. You have other restrictions on what can happen in your community based on flood zones. Uh your historic districts, it it's, you know, and avail, whether it's a script to build or whatever.
I do believe it was Kevin that had his hand raised next. And do we have any other comments or questions? And I know we ran a little bit over on the side, I apologize.
Sorry.
No, you're good.
So um a typical five thousand square foot, single family zoned lot in San Diego. What is the maximum density, the maximum build out that could occur? Under these new bills? Is that a fourplex, is it a fourplex plus a companion unit, plus a junior companion unit? Um what would that like?
Uh under Senate Bill nine, the maximum is four units.
All right.
And and it's two main units and two ADUs.
Okay, so four, four living units, two standard dwelling units, all right.
Right.
Um. Yeah, I've I've been looking at pictures of the governor's seven thousand square foot mansion on eight acres. In the suburbs of Sacramento while we're having this discussion. And I think it's just totally insane that the state is stomping out all the uh local planning and community planning efforts. And so it's uh, I find this all a bit insulting that they they know what's best for us. Um the 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 battle, Craig, is not OB against San Diego, it's OB against uh. The California Legislature now and it's, these housing bills are just dizzying to to follow. And it's uh, I see why people just wanna, just wanna leave. It's it's the state taking over everything, the um.
If I can interject one short.
Yeah, go go ahead.
Uh one of the reasons why housing is important is because the state's economic health. Relies upon having an adequate housing supply for the workforce. We've already heard from countless major employers, from high tech to biotech. Um and educational uh institutions, the UCs and state universities. Are having trouble getting assistant associate professors to want to move here to teach. Because they can't find housing. And um a a biotech company, a high tech company can't find adequate housing for their big time executives. That are gonna be paid, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars to come and design new chips for uh Qualcomm.
Yeah, I get it, everyone wants to live in the same place. We got a whole lot of empty space in the state and everyone wants to cram together and make everyone else deal with it. So it's, I'm preaching to, you know, I I I get it. I just wanted to express that.
Thank you.
And I totally understand your position.
Do you have any other questions, Kevin?
Why does it cost so damn much to build here? I don't know, this is a builder giveaway, but I I don't have anything else.
Thank you, um Deanna, I just have one final comment be before we let you go. And we do, like Kevin was just alluding to, we see a lot of um, you know, trying to spur development, trying to get developers to build more. Uh but when I talk to my developer friends and architecture friends, it the the restraint really now seems to be the price of lumber and labor. Are there any bills that are looking to invest in uh new technology to build houses? So we can maybe steer away from lumber as that's also kind of bad for the environment, cutting down so many trees as well. Uh or making any other investments to uh have our development be more sustainable and less expensive?
Um there are discussions about more sustainable development and uh building supplies. And um what we can do to maintain the um the flow in of materials that are essential for um building. It's a real challenge. Uh the prices are sky high and they're gonna get worse. As the countries around the world where we're getting the lumber are going underwater, pretty much. And uh you know, we are, the reality is that we're facing a real climate challenge. Which is why Tony did Senate Bill one this year, which um will provide. Which is why Tony did Senate Bill one this year, which will provide funding specifically for coastal zone cities, communities like OB that need to have their infrastructure fixed so that you can survive the 10-foot increase in flooding that you're going to have, that you can get sewer lines replaced. You know, every single water treatment plant and sewage treatment plant in the state is destined to go underwater and all will have to be moved inland to accommodate the needs of cities. And Senate Bill one is the first step towards identifying, helping communities and cities identify what needs to happen in terms of preparing for that by giving you grant money to, to make your list.
Well, thank you, Deanna. And I would actually, while you're here, I would be happy to request a meeting with Tony Atkins so we could talk about how SB one funds can be used to help Ocean Beach. We already have a lot of flooding problems. And as you may have heard, our peer is at the end of its life cycle and we have a lot of great ideas for a way that we can build back and build back in a sustainable way. So I'll reach out to Reed and maybe we'll get that scheduled soon. But I really appreciate your comments and I really do hope you look at the other side of what makes housing so expensive as opposed, you know, because it's always build more, build more, build more. But, you know, there's a lot that goes into it and we want that to start being examined and, you know, legislated on as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now on to a super non-controversial topic. Brian from City Parks and Forestry is here to talk to us about a couple of unfortunately dying trees in our neighborhood. So Brian, I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
Sounds good. Thanks, Andrea. And I don't know about controversial. I think there is some controversy with trees sometimes.
So facetious, but go ahead.
Let me see if I can figure out how to share my screen here. I do have a presentation, but I know we're strapped for time, so I will try to
Thank you. No, that's completely my fault. Everyone will be here all night if we have to be.
All good. So I do like to talk about our citywide urban forestry program when I do presentations. So I'll make it very brief. We believe that we have over 200,000 street trees, over 600,000 trees in our parks. And possibly based on recent inventories and light our assessments, we think we might have more than 4 million trees on private properties throughout the city of San Diego. And then I always like to celebrate the fact that we're a Tree City USA for our 11th year. There are a lot of cities in California that have been Tree City USA for probably 40-plus years. So we have a lot of work to still do here, but we're moving forward and I think we're doing a good job at this point. So, all right, let me see if I can figure out how to move forward. There we go. So I wanted to talk about our Torrey pine street trees in Ocean Beach. Actually, I presented to you folks exactly like a year ago. I think it was like June 2nd or June 1st, June 3rd, something like that last year, in regards to removing two trees on Saratoga because they were dead. And there was actually three trees in this location. And so what we did is we tried to treat the third tree back in July of last year. However, we evaluated the tree in January and it was also dead. So I think that tree was removed completely this week. I think they started removing it last week and I think they completed the job this week. So that's the update on that tree. The other tree that I wanted to bring to your attention is another Torrey pine at 4633 Long Branch. This particular tree has been in the news in the past. There's been a lot of talk on the city side as well as other folks talking about removing this tree because of its heavy lean towards the street. So a couple of years ago, the city actually painted the curb red adjacent to this tree just to keep folks from parking underneath the tree. Partly because there's concern that the tree has a heavy lean and it's possible it could fail, probably not going to happen. But more importantly, and you can't see it in these photos, but vehicles over time were hitting the tree and damaging the tree as well. And then if you look at this photo here on the right, you can see a, a white circle. There's actually a survey nail inside that circle. And the city of San Diego actually measures that survey nail almost every six months to see if there's any movement in the tree due to the severe 25% lean that that tree has. And for the most part, there hasn't been a lot of movement in the tree over the last, I think it's been about almost 20 years since that survey nail was put into that tree. So, I mean, you look at the picture here on the left, the tree actually looks really healthy, looks great, right? You can see it has a lean, but it doesn't look that severe. With trees, you know, even though they have a lean, a lot of times they will self-correct themselves. So you can kind of see that with this tree that it's actually the branches are kind of moving over to the left over time. Obviously, when you look at a photo like this, you can see that the lean is somewhat pretty severe. So, I mean, this is a fantastic resource for the community. However, the city of San Diego is concerned that it has this large lean to it. I believe the diameter of the tree is about 45 inches. So, you know, we're always concerned about safety in the, in the right of way and, and what's going on here. The other concern about this tree too is that a lot of these Torrey pines in OB don't have a lot of growing space to them. So this is not the best photo. I just grabbed it from Google Maps tonight, but there is a sidewalk here that was recently repaired in the last 10 years. The sidewalk was shrunk. We did everything we could to try to save this tree and keep this tree in place, but even, even when we shrunk that sidewalk by six to 12 inches in width, there's still not a lot of growing space for this tree. And the other thing you can see here too is a lot of deflections in the street. So we've actually asked our roadways division not to repair this part of the street so that in order to avoid cutting roots and so forth. So on to the challenging news in regards to this tree. In, I think it was February here, we had one of our arborists go out there, take a look at the tree. Sorry, I think it was April. And take a look at the tree because the neighbor adjacent to this tree in this house here reported that there was a branch that had a large crack in it. So we went out there and low and behold, there's a large crack in the, in the tree and we couldn't figure out what was going on. But what we did is that very same day, we called our city contractor to remove that branch as soon as possible because we felt like it was actively failing. Yeah, so that was April 9th. And most of the branches on this tree are pretty large. So that was kind of alarming.
That's happening right now?
Yeah. What we all, so we had a meeting a few days after that tree branch removal, decided that we would treat the tree for a turpentine beetle. If you look at this tree, and I think I have a photo here on the next slide, there's some dead needles in the tree and a couple of dead branches as well. So this just all happened like within the last few months, basically. So now we're keeping tabs on this tree pretty much on a weekly basis. See, I thought I had some good photos here, but now I'm not seeing them. But we're keeping tabs on this tree. We think that, oh, here we go. So here's the picture of the turpentine beetle. We actually had the contractor go up into the crown of the tree. You can see some exit holes on some of the branches. And then if you look at this photo here on the right, you can see some of the yellowing of the needles. So anyway, we removed that large branch. We're continuing to monitor the survey nail. We, the good news is that we haven't seen any drastic structural changes in the tree in the last month or so. So that's great. I would say that we really haven't seen too much change in the dieback of the tree or dieback of needles or anything like that. So that's also good news. But the reality is that there has been some recent construction on the adjacent property to this tree, which could affect the tree roots. And there is now this infestation of the turpentine beetle. We did treat the tree and we plan to keep treating the tree for the next, you know, few months and see what happens and, and go from there. This is just an example of some exit holes from beetles in the Torrey pine. Little bit of background information. If you want more information about the program, sandiego.gov/trees. We always ask folks to use the Get It Done application for tree problems. You know, to be honest with you, I think I scheduled to be on this meeting about a month ago and we probably thought at that time this tree might be dead or close to dead at this time. So again, the good news is that the tree is still alive. The condition has not changed, but we wanted to bring it to your attention that it's, it is a possibility that the tree could go into, into a major decline and die, just kind of like what happened with the trees on Saratoga. So that's my information on that. Happy to take questions. Let me know what you think.
Thanks, Brian. Do we have any questions? It's a little bit harder for me to see you raising your hands with this layout.
Can I assist?
I have, I have a question, Andrea.
Okay, you got it, Kevin. Oh, thank you. Yeah, if you stop sharing your screen. I just didn't know if people might want to see the pictures again, but if you actually could just email me this, uh, presentation, Brian?
Yes.
And I can pass along anyone who has any follow-up questions. Thank you. Yes, Kevin, and then of course, Virginia. I was desperately looking for Virginia's picture because I knew she'd have a question. But
Hi, Virginia.
Thanks, Brian.
Brian, thank you.
Oh, sorry. So I, I really appreciate your, your presentation here. Does your department have a policy for notifying us or community members on, on removals, especially, you know, like a, these are protected trees, obviously? Can't notify people on every single tree, but what's the policy for that?
Well, no, our, and it's only been recent, I would say, probably like the last year and a half, two years, we do leave a letter with the adjacent property owner when we need to go in there and remove the tree. Whether, now, there's certain situations where we might have to remove the tree, like during a storm situation where it's an emergency and so we're not going to leave notification. In this kind of case, this is kind of a slow-moving problem where if we feel like the tree is dead or nearly dead, then we will leave notification with the property owner. Usually it's a month, two or three months in advance before the tree actually gets removed. Obviously, we would like to do better than that and give better notification, but with the amount of trees that we have in San Diego, that's what we are able to do at this point in time. And, you know, this is a very unique tree too. So I think we spend more time and more energy on this particular tree, probably more than any other tree in San Diego. So we're actively trying to keep it in place and keep it alive, keep it healthy. But again, just wanted to let you guys know that there is a possibility that the tree might be in decline at this point.
Virginia?
Hi, Virginia.
Hi, Brian. Thanks for the update. I had a couple of questions. First, that branch that was removed, was that the lower, or actually the lowest branch reaching out over the street in that direction?
I don't know if it was the lowest branch, but one of the lowest branches. And this particular branch was actually going over the adjacent house.
Oh.
And then I, I I think I failed to say this too. We actually are planning to send the contractor out there either this week or next week to actually remove a couple of additional branches to that tree. Just for public safety and for the health of the tree as well.
And, um, yeah, I want to thank you for complying with the the intent of the law for the protection of the trees is that we do support them during their golden years, their, their last few years to keep them alive. And I don't think most people realize the benefits that a large, a mature tree has, that every they just grow in size and in benefits exponentially over the years. And it's a great loss to lose a big tree like that. I hope the treatment takes hold and I don't think that it won't be growing rapidly, but should be sufficient to stay in place where it is and just live out its remaining lifespan. It has a, an end date, just like we all do. And I hope I don't see it when it arrives. But thanks for letting us know that the tree needs our support and we'll keep an eye on it.
Yeah, and thanks, Virginia. And I would say, reach out to the neighbors if you can, or not just you that live on that block. I, I know a couple of folks have come out of their homes wondering what we're doing, because we've been there all, I mean, a couple of times a week in the last month. Because we're concerned. You've pointed out in the past that Torrey pines sometimes have a natural lean to them. And it's not just Torrey pines. There's other tree species that tend to lean more than others. And we, and we call it, sometimes we call it a phototrophic lean, like they're kind of leaning towards the sunlight or leaning in a certain direction to get, you know, as much sun as they can. Other tree species don't do that as much. So, yeah, yeah, that seems to be a common theme of Torrey pines. Again, for me, one of the bigger concerns is that these trees get so large and we plant them in such small parkway spaces. And that's really my big concern when it comes to public safety. So we'll see what happens. I'll do my best to update you all, you know, in the next month or two if things change on the condition of the tree.
You, Brian, I think we would all be sad to see it go, not just for the tree loss, but I always park under that tree because no one's parked there. Chris.
Don't park there.
Chris, I think you have the floor next.
Well, definitely don't park there because you can't get that sap off your car, trust me. So I live about three houses away and Brian, we've been observing your crew for a number of years and just following the progress of the tree or the, the decline, I guess. And we were definitely watching for the solid three hours that the crew was out there in April, doing what they could to sort of balance and level the tree in terms of, you know, clearing out the left side, you know, so that wouldn't fall, you know, overly on, onto the other adjacent property. We love it. We love the trees on the street. This one is tricky and I, I would be lying if I said, you know, my thought process doesn't bounce, bounce back and forth between save that thing and what's the safety risk here? And I'm always reminded of the, the Torrey pine that fell on the top of Santa Monica a couple of years ago and killed some people.
Me too as well.
Just don't want to see that happen. And so I appreciate the presentation. I think to Kevin's point, the best we can ask for is, you know, keep us updated specifically on the street. I actually didn't see any flyers, you know, any of the recent times you guys have been out. I know you said it's challenging to do that. But I think there's a lot of folks on the street that have been watching it and, and probably have notes that we could share and compare and so just interested to see, I guess, the future, but keep us posted.
Yeah. And again, make, make your neighbors aware, you know, that's part of the reason why I'm here tonight. And one of the, our toughest challenges is And one of the, our toughest challenges is planting new trees or planting replacement trees. So that's been one of the challenges with the Saratoga location where we had those three large Torrey pines. I don't think we've been able to plant new trees in those areas because we haven't been able to get commitment from the adjacent property owners to water those tree, water new trees for three years. So just throwing that out there that we can always use a little extra help in planting new trees.
Okay.
I have a, just as for our commitment for watering, Anne Spaggy suggested that the Girl Scouts are always looking for a project. So if we can maybe get creative without not have the adjacent property owner have to do the work.
Yeah, if we can get some kind of commitment from someone else or from the community to plant trees and have someone else water them, I'm up for that as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Virginia. I see Tracy and then I see Gregory Glassman. And then I am going to close this item because we do have a few more things to get to. But love the passion. So Tracy, you have the floor.
Yeah, just real quick question. What's the average lifespan of a Torrey pine in our region? And how old do you guys think this one is?
Oh, good questions. I mean, average lifespan of a Torrey pine, I think we feel like is a couple hundred years or more, like in its natural environment. For a tree in the urban environment, there's been studies, and I mean, not specific for Torrey pines, but for just street trees, only lasts like 10, 15, 20 years on average. I would say more from experience, I think if we have a street tree last for at least 50 years, we're doing really good. These trees in particular, we think they were planted in the 1920s. I think just based on age of the neighborhood, et cetera, is my guess. I hope that answers that.
Thank you. And then Gregory Glassman, if you're still here. And you want to speak? I saw your hand up, but it's lowered now. Okay. I, I do have one final question. I saw that the lar, the other tree that was being removed on Saratoga, just the large amount of wood that was there. What does the city do with that wood? Is it able to be repurposed at all or does it just get straight wood chipped and dumped?
It mostly gets chipped and dumped. There's some viability issues with the city, so we don't offer wood to anyone or anything like that. I'm not going to stop you from taking pieces if you happen to be there on site. The city obviously is thinking about ways of reusing or repurposing urban wood. But I think we have a long ways to go in regards to that.
Well, thank you. Okay, great. Well, and again, thank you so much. Please do send me that presentation so we can post it on our website. And I can send it out to anyone who asks and wasn't, may be able to be here today. So let's move on to our next one, because I know, we, yes, thank you, Brian. We have a lot of community up for the, here for these next two items. So I want to be cognizant of their time as we push later into the evening. So Nicole, we have a representation of the parks plan that was tabled last month. I think since then, at the request of the board, I know you guys wanted feedback from the Mission Bay Parks Committee since we were opining on what really fell under their region as well. Nicole did present the draft plan to them to see what they thought of our improvements. A lot of the improvements were already on their unfunded needs list and they seemed to like everything else. So they like what we're doing and Nicole is back again, I think with more, even more community feedback to present the parks plan. So I'm going to turn it over to Nicole.
Thanks, Andrea. Yes, so after we had presented the parks proposal, park subcommittee proposal two months ago, essentially I've been going to community groups to garner their support. I presented the presentation at the Mission Bay Parks Committee, which was approved, just submitted. And they have added all of the requested improvements to their unfunded needs list, as Andrea mentioned. Several of the improvements are already on their funded needs list, including both the Dusty Roads Playground and the Rob Field Playground, as well as several improvements related to the ADA accessibility issues. And so I plan to speak with them a little further on how we can get the ball rolling on some of those already funded needs, but those were all approved. The Dusty Roads Park Council also approved of the plans for Dusty Roads Park and the Peninsula Community Planning Board's Park Subcommittee approved of the proposal. However, when it went to the full board, there was some confusion on whether Collier Park is in fact within the PCPB jurisdiction or if it's in the Ocean Beach jurisdiction. I believe there's two conflicting maps. One shows it in the Peninsula Community and one shows it in the Ocean Beach Community. And they voted to table approving it until the Ocean Beach Planning Board approved it. So sort of a catch 22 there. They're not going to approve it until we do. And if, yeah, so. As well as, I spoke with Misha, who attended our last full board meeting with some concerns about the placement of the playground at Saratoga Park. And he has explained to him that the idea behind the placement of the playground, which is of course geared towards children and caretakers with disabilities, the reason that it was chosen for that particular area is due to the proximity of handicap parking spaces. And so Misha and his group has since withdrawn their proposal to the project, opposition to the project rather. And so everyone seems to be quite positive, a lot of positive feedback about the parks proposal. I also have a letter from the Pioneer Day School on Santa Monica, which I can read to you if you like. They are also in full support of the Saratoga Park project and are very excited that a playground that's geared towards, you know, disabled children and their caretakers who could be coming to Ocean Beach. Would you like me to read that, Andrea, or I sent it over to you earlier today?
I saw it. If anyone is interested in seeing it, I can send it around to the board just in the essence of time. But it was a, it was a nice letter.
It was.
Thank you.
So I do believe that we have community support from all of the organizations involved. Are there any questions that the board has for me?
Yeah, please raise your hand. And I know I was in touch with some community members as well that wanted to speak about parks plan. Jane, is that a thumbs up or is that a hand raise? Thanks. All right. Anthony, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I don't really have a question. I just wanted to acknowledge Nicole's awesome work and, and just getting things done. Thank you so much for, you know, making things happen. I did a list of stuff you did, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Thanks, Anthony. Do I have any other community comments? Craig?
I just wanted to thank, also thank Nicole for all her hard work on this, as well as her work on the Veterans Plaza issue.
Thank you. Do I have any other community comments or board comments?
I have some comments. This is Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, go.
I have a list of the CIP-related and previous board-related stuff regarding some of these parks. For the most part, it lines up pretty well. There's a couple of items that I think should probably be added just for the sake of continuity. It's a little unclear how this unfunded needs list gets dealt with at the city level. So I just want to, I want to have some continuity on that. I can go through those park by park. It's not every single one of these. Let me see here. And maybe that will elicit some other comments. Veterans Park, there's really not much to that. The only thing I noticed was there's a, there was some effort to resaw that whole area or budget requests for that. I was not clear if the CDC proposal included resawing that entire park or not, or if that's something that we should be requesting in addition to that. Maybe Nicole knows the answer.
I don't believe that's within the scope of the proposed Veterans Plaza. However, I'd be happy to reach out to Parks and Rec when we are having this discussion about the plaza to see if there would be a way that they can fix up the park a bit. The lawn space there has just been utterly ground down into dirt. And of course, that really takes away from the enjoyment of the area. I agree.
Yeah, and obviously that ties into, you know, vendor ordinance issues as well. But I, I, it, I would, I don't know if we're, how we're going to do a motion on this, but I think that should be added to our request in addition to the CDC plan, which is very comprehensive. With regard to Saratoga Park, when I'm talking about the beach park, the board has already supported that in a few different iterations of that. It was already in the public financing plan, so it's reflected in like DIF fees. But for some reason, it's not on Park and Rec's unfunded needs list. And so it, it needs to be, but maybe this will get it there if we, when we get this in front of them tonight. They had an additional item on their list to remove the berm on the beach side and add benches and some landscaping there to reduce the erosion. I think that's kind of what's done at the end of, I want to say Kate May. There's some, some landscaping there that sort of prevents the dunes from, from growing. So that's something just to, if anyone wants to push for that in addition, as opposed to that, you know, rock pile there that's not really, you can't even really walk past it. Otherwise, not really much to talk about in that one. The Ebers Park, these generally speaking have been supported in the past by, by the board and CIP priorities. This is obviously a more specific version of that, and I know we got council members here on that. I don't have any thing to add to that one. Collier Park is absolutely within the Peninsula Planning Area. I don't know why anyone's trying to say otherwise. It's 100% in their area. It's always been. Certainly, we can advocate for that. The subcommittee plan included a request for a shade structure, or I believe like a gazebo structure, if I understand it. And I personally would strongly oppose that for, well, it, we see what the gazebos turn into and our other parks. I, I don't like to design parks around our worst-case scenario, but it seems like in this, you know, with regard to gazebos, it just, we don't have the ability to police those and they don't get used as intended. So I, I think any, any advocacy for gazebos should be removed from the.
Kevin, if I can just interject there really quick, I believe the draft proposal called for an expansion of the picnic area, but not necessarily a gazebo structure.
Okay, there was something about a permanent shelter structure, which will become a, you know, a drug use shelter if, if, if we get it. So I'll, I'll double check that. And these are all things that we, we could approve, we could pass a motion with a few comments on there and those adjustments could be made and then these things could be submitted. We don't need to keep, you know, taking this back to the full board. To go away for a second.
I certainly agree with that and I hope not to waste any more of the board's time on, you know, the minutia of, of a plan of this nature that encompasses so many different parts and different areas. I definitely appreciate community input, you know, and I'm going to strive to just do what's best for the community. And I agree with your point on gazebos have in the past. If we have any, you know, experience at Dusty Roads Park with their, with their gazebo there, we, we do certainly see some issues around that.
I'm back. I, I heard you. The Spray Street Park, the board already voted to support that last, end of last year. So that's good. With regard to Rob Field, some of the citywide and previous board actions involved advocating for a pedestrian path connecting to Dusty Roads. There was some talk, I think from Park and Rec, trying to put in a permanent soccer field with lighting and bleachers there. Because right now they're using like generators and stuff. So that, that was at Rob or, you know, where the other fields are. I don't believe OB actually advocated for that though. And then there was completing the pathway, which I believe is already part of an active CIP project. That's the entryway. And then just some turf improvements that are active in the CIP. So the CIPs that are active would not tie into these requests, unfortunately. The last one, Dusty Roads is, is one that also, you know, connecting to a bridge across the highway. We could advocate for that in addition to this. We previously prioritized expanding the parking lot on that one. That's not included in the subcommittee proposal. I think it absolutely should be. And we can easily just add that in after this meeting if, if the vote supports that. What else? The, the soccer field within Dusty Roads, there was some questions over whether that's feasible. I didn't know at the subcommittee that this was to be a permanent thing with fencing and lighting around it. I understood the lighting to be for the dog park. I don't think the soccer field or permanent lighting is appropriate in that park, especially with the proximity to the houses there and, and really the lack of parking. So I, if I was making a motion right now, I would, I would ask the, the soccer fields from Dusty Roads, maybe even advocate for that at Rob Field and expand the parking lot. People are parking in the dirt area there. The rest of it, there wasn't really anything controversial with that. Some of the requests were in addition to previous requests. I, I wanted to just say in general, the goal is to get feedback, not to get approval on this stuff. So maybe that wasn't clear before, but, so I think it, it might have actually discouraged some feedback. But anyways, let's make the most of what we, we have. And maybe we can get a motion with some, some tweaks. One more thing, Nicole Burgess had advocated for bike amenities in Dusty Roads on the, along limits there. And that's also not in our subcommittee recommendation. So if anyone wants to push for that, go for it.
Thank you. I see Tracy's hand up next. Tracy?
Yeah, hi. Okay, so Nicole, you're amazing. You really took this ball and you ran with it and I completely appreciate that. But I do believe that there was, even though you may have been presenting this as a draft, I think people were still voting on it like it was a done deal and that made me really, really nervous. The reason why it made me nervous is because it was a draft and it was not approved by the board in the first place. So I was, I was really nervous and that's why I read the motion to the Peninsula Planning Board, because I wanted them to know that the, the original plan was tabled because it wasn't fine. the original plan was tabled, because it wasn't final. So that was, that was the whole deal. And I think that was one of the reasons why they voted no on it, because we had tabled it, and they were like, well, why are we voting on something that the board had tabled on, right? So anyway, so that's just my, uh, I, I wasn't sure how strongly you were pushing the, this is just for your feedback and not for your vote at this point. So that's why I was nervous about the whole deal. Since the board hadn't approved it, that's why I was getting nervous. Secondly, Kevin did a great job of compiling all of the previous requests with the current request, and he submitted a eight-page document like 15 minutes before the board meeting tonight and said, here you go. And I went, wait a minute, I can't like summarize all of this with what we currently have. I, I just, I don't have time to like read it and incorporate it and the whole deal 15 minutes before a board meeting. So I, as well and organized as it is that Kevin did that, that job, I still don't, I did not have time to really internalize it or to put it in perspective of the proposal that we're working on right now. So I would really, really advocate for at least one more subcommittee meeting-
No!
-and incorporate this, because I, I just can't, I can't vote on stuff that I, I just can't. But I can't vote on something that I don't see as final. And your proposal, your draft proposal was so well put together, that I feel like if it isn't, if the new items that we have aren't also placed in that draft proposal, then it's going to be hard for people to go, wait a minute, was that included? I don't know if that was included, maybe. I don't, you know, and it's like, until we have something in writing, I don't think that we should really be voting on it until we have something firm. And I don't want to have a motion that is like, we're gonna approve this with 50 additional things added to it. And I know that's, that's hyperbole, but you know, it's like, we're gonna make a motion and we're gonna list out all of the new things that we're adding to it. And it's like, it would be better if it was just in the, the proposal that you created. So I'm very uncomfortable with the way that this has been ending up, and I, I personally, I can't vote for it right now. And I'm on the subcommittee, and I can't vote for it right now, because I don't think it's final, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's complete yet.
I stand your- But I would say that I would push for calling a vote on this proposal as it stands. And if it doesn't go through, then we can go back to the drawing table. But I'd like to, to hear one way or another on it from the board tonight.
I prepared it. You have the, let me, let, let Chris get in his comment, but I do wanna wrap this up, because we're running far behind. Okay.
Thank you, Andrea. Good either. I was trying to jump in before a motion. Hey, guys, this is why I joined this board. This is such a good discussion, and I think there's been some really valid points that last forward, especially Kevin with all the, the record-keeping, and I was trying to figure out how does Kevin keep all these notes over the years, but very impressive. But also, to Tracy's point, well, no, let me go back to, to, to people that commended Nicole and the subcommittee. I agree. I mean, I think that, that's where we're at, is because it was such a well-thought-out draft that, that, that we were almost prepared to take action on it. And that's a kudos to, to the work really at hand and the good design and thought that was given to what a plan could be for these parks. Having said that, I have to land kind of where Tracy is at, in that, in any master planning effort I've ever led, engagement is half the battle. And so the engagement that you've done with some of these other planning boards and the discussions that had to date, that's a good chunk. Personally, I, I would like to see a little bit more direct feedback from our community members. You know, from my master planning experience, 500 is always the statistically significant number that you're trying to acquire for surveys or whatever it might be. I'm not saying we need to get 500 surveys from our community members, but I think a little bit more input from the community would be helpful, coupled with that reference check that Tracy, Tracy just called out, you know, make sure that everything that we're looking at, including in this plan, you know, hasn't been dropped off from what the previous requests were, or that we're not double-dipping in any instances. So I think for me, I, I'd like to do a little bit more homework on, in those two areas before we're asked to vote on something.
Thank you, Chris. I figured, yeah, I think-
I feel like the salient- hello? The salient point in the document that Kevin sent out just before the meeting was that the majority of these recommendations have already been approved by the planning board many times over. And so I, I wonder what has changed.
I think we gotta shit or get off the pot. I'm gonna make a motion.
Is that George?
No, this is Kevin. Sorry.
Sorry, your voice sounds so different. Go for it, Kevin. Please do.
I would move to approve the park subcommittee recommendations with the following amendments. That is to remove any reference to permanent gazebos or shelters. To add expanding the east parking lot of Dusty Roads Park to remove the dedicated soccer field from Dusty Roads Park. And to add re-sawing of the Veterans Plaza Park. And I think that's it. That's my motion. I wanna get this thing out the door and stop kicking it around. The, the, the other things that the board has previously advocated for, I would recommend that Andrea include like a cover letter that, that mentions or lists those in addition to this. They're already been voted on. We don't have to keep voting on things that we've already supported in the past. So that, that doesn't have to be incorporated. That's my motion.
Thank you, Captain. Do I have a second or any discussion of the motion? Jane?
Second.
Jane has seconded the motion. Okay, do I have any discussion either from board members or community members? Virginia?
I think that the, the amendments proposed are relatively minor and wouldn't prevent me from voting on it right now.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my kids just really wanted to come and say that we go to Eber Street Park like every day, and they heard that they're doing these improvements, especially for my little guy here who just turned nine. And they wanted to come and speak up to make sure that something eventually is done to improve that park that they've been growing up going to. You guys wanna add anything to that? And they're super stoked about the park down on Saratoga, too, potentially having a playground there, because they love going there every day in the summer, too.
Well, thank you. We appreciate even our youngest community members getting involved as early and as often as possible. Okay, so since I don't see anyone else, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Tracy to call the roll and the vote. Thank you.
Sorry, I had to get the paper. Okay, Melanie?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Anthony?
Yes.
I am voting no. Jane? I think I saw her mouth move yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Richard?
I have to go affirmative on that. Yes.
George?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Nicole? Virginia?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, guys. So I think the next step I wanna try, Nicole and I will go ahead and ask for a meeting with Teddy and City Council and see if we can start pushing these things forward. Thank you all so much. So next, and I sincerely apologize that this agenda got a little bit behind. We have a presentation. This was a community-initiated, initiated action to rename the volleyball courts down by Dog, in the middle of Dog Beach and the lifeguard, I think, Tower 5. Rename them after a, a community member who recently passed and was heavily involved with the beach volleyball community in San Diego. So I have Stephen up. Stephen, are you here?
I am.
Okay, great. I'm gonna turn the floor over to him, and I'm gonna share a letter he did write to us. And he's gonna tell you a little bit about the proposal, a little bit about the history, and then we'll hear any community comments and support or against, and we'll take a vote if we have a motion. Okay, Stephen?
Great. Well, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm here to get the support to rename the volleyball courts after George Stepanoff. He, I've been working, I worked with, started with the city. And Coda sent me to Park and Recs and got support from Park and Recs, and then they said I needed to get the support of the, the planning board of Ocean Beach. There was a nice article about George in The Beacon just recently. He, he moved to Ocean Beach in 1958, the corner of Abbott and, and Voltaire Street. And in 1960, he put in the first beach volleyball court there in Ocean Beach. And from that day forward, every single pole that is at Ocean Beach, George has put in and maintained. So then for the last 60 years, that wonderful facility has been maintained. When the city vehicles knock over a pole or a vandal knocks over a pole or whatever, it has been George who has replaced it without even the city asking him to, or the community asking him to, and maintain that facility for all of the public to use all of these, these many, many years. So over 60 years, George was the steward of that wonderful facility that the public uses, that high school uses, that, anyway, it's been a great thing for Ocean Beach. And I, I, I only wish that I had started this while he was still alive, because I think it's a, it really, he really is deserving. He was a, a city fireman, made battalion chief, was responsible for the hazmat, you know, just as an aside, he, he was a, a servant of the, of the community and Ocean Beach residents, his kids are still there, they're still supporting the, the courts as well. So I just think it's a, a really nice proper dedication to the person that started the first pole that's been there and it's gone for the last 60 years, just to name the courts after him. And when I met with the Park and Rec Deputy Director, they also identified this, the sign going into the North Ocean Beach parking lot that's already there, has, looks like it has space on it to add the name, that I'd certainly know that the, the community volleyball community would raise any funds to, to rework the wording on that sign. It actually looks like it could use a little sprucing up anyway. Anyway, it's, I started playing there in the 70s and, and have been involved ever since as well, and, and we, we love the area. It really was George that, that has done it all, and I, I think it's a, a proper, I think it's a wonderful thing, i- if we could just name the courts after him and, and add him to a sign. So it's no extra expanse, we're not adding anything to the facility. It would just be basically designating it that they're his, in his honor, and adding his name onto the, the sign that, that is already existing going into the parking lot. That's my, my proposal.
Thank you, Steve. And yeah, just to reiterate, any signage or any changes that you guys would be able to pay for that instead of this?
Absolutely. No, absolutely. I mean, if you look at the list, you told me yesterday, hey, it's better if we get some community support, and I barely got the word out, and there's already people.
I see it. It's great.
Celebration of his life in, in a couple of months that the family actually needs to send out, tell us who's coming, because they have no idea. There's gonna be hundreds and hundreds of people, volleyball people, fire people, Ocean Beach community that are going to be representing. I, I know we'll have no problem paying for the, any, any charge of the sign.
Awesome. Thank you. And I see Craig did it in writing, but he motioned to support the renaming and dedication of the volleyball courts to George Mouse. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Jane. Just beat out Anthony. You gotta, you gotta say it, you know. Okay, great. Tracy, will you go ahead and call the roll? And I just wanna thank you so much. This is a great outpouring of support. I know I play at those courts almost every Saturday, so it's good to know the history and see a community so behind it and dedicated.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Melanie? Melanie? Voting on dedication?
Yes.
All right. Chris?
Yes, and a great article in The Beacon. I didn't know him, but I was very intrigued by the story, so yes.
Anthony?
Yes, it's just not for his firefighter service, not for volleyball, too.
I vote yes. Jane?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Richard?
Make it happen.
George?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Newman?
Very cool guy. Yes.
Nicole?
And let me just say, I'm floored by the amount of community members that have turned up to support this. Thank you.
Virginia? Motion passes.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and you know, I-
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I hope you guys can get fundraised that money and we'll make it happen ASAP. I'll try to put the letter together, together either today or tomorrow and send it to you, as well as Jen Campbell and anyone else in Parks that you think I need to send it to?
Yeah, I'll send it to his name. I think it's Michael Tully is the Deputy Director of Park and Rec, but I can email it to you.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, last one. I think we can still get out of here before nine and have dinner at a more European time, I guess, if you have enough eaten dinner. So moving on to final thing, as we know, maybe every other year, we go through a CIP process at the city. So since we went through it in 2019, we're going through it again in 2021. Those comments are gonna be due by August, and at the next CPC meeting, the city will be presenting, you know, going over the CIP process, what qualifies as a CIP process and all of that. So I wanted to get possibly an ad hoc group together, excuse me, to meet, excuse me again, and to come up with a list of possible CIP projects that we can review and maybe vote on at the July and probably the August meeting as well, if we need to continue it. I know last time we kind of just proposed projects at the meeting, so I, I felt that it's a little bit disjointed. And we've been doing such great work in our ad hoc committees. I was hoping a few of you, y'all would step up and maybe just meet once or twice to get a good list of possible CIP projects going. Nicole? Jane? Okay, Tracy? Nicole, Jane, and Tracy. Does anyone else wanna be on the capital improvement project ad hoc committee?
I can do it.
Is that Melanie?
Yes.
Okay, we got Melanie. Kevin, did I see you raise your hand? Kevin? Okay. Anyone else? Any community members? Okay, I know John Amber had emailed me about it earlier, but he might just wanna come to your meetings and be a non-voting member. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the formation of an ad hoc committee to come up with a CIP list to be voted on at subsequent planning board meetings for the 2021? um, to come up with a CIP list to be voted on at um, subsequent planning board meetings for the two thousand and twenty-one cycle?
I motion to approve that.
Thank you, Chris. I'm sorry, Tracy, did you get that? Newman's got a second. Tracy, let me know what you need to upload. Yep, okay, wonderful. And then the list, you, Kevin, Nicole and Jane and Melanie. Perfect. Okay, um, let's call the roll.
Melanie?
Yes.
Chris? Anthony?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Uh, Newman?
Yes.
Nicole? I didn't hear you. Did you say yes?
Yes, I did say yes.
All right, thank you. I just saw you sit back in your chair and I was like, oh, maybe, I don't know. Um, Virginia?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we're good.
Awesome. Thank you all for stepping up. Um, okay.
I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and send out an email to everybody and find out when a good time is. I'll, I'll go ahead and just do that as secretary.
Yeah, thank you. And then like I said, CPC will be giving a presentation on it this month. Um, so as many of you that can attend that CPC meeting and just see what the process is like, that would be awesome. So I'll send that um, agenda to you and then you can send it to everyone. And um, yeah, I, I know we'll come up with some good ideas. You guys are nothing if not full of good ideas. Okay, um, I'm going to move on to, and so we have reports. Uh, the only big thing I have from the Chair's Report is next Monday, the seventh at six PM, there is a mobility workshop I encourage for all community members uh, to attend about the Central Mobility Hub. Please, 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 if you have the time at six PM on Monday, do go. Uh, it's a good workshop. They really, really are just open to hearing feedback. And I really do think we can shape the face of this project that is going to, you know, directly affect us and what kind of future transportation and public transportation amenities that we will be receiving. Uh, the link to attend that should already be on our website, but we will of course post it again on the seventh, reminding everyone to go. Um, and that's all I have. I know Craig has a treasurer's report, so we'll hop to that.
Okay, the treasurer's report is that there is a one thousand, twenty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents in the account. And in addition, it is that time of year again when I submit it for reimbursement to the city. So if anyone has either been reimbursed for any expenses that they've uh, expended on, on planning board business, please get me the receipts for that as soon as possible. Um, and if anybody has got an expense that they went out of pocket on for planning board business that they have not submitted for reimbursement, please submit uh, the receipts for whatever those expenses were. Um, ASAP. I would like to get um, the request for reimbursement completed and off. Uh, no later than the middle of June because the next fiscal year starts in July. So um, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig, and thank you as always for staying on top of that and making sure we get all of our money back. Uh, does anyone else have any reports?
I have a report, Andrea.
Go for it, Kevin.
Um, there will be a project review committee meeting in two weeks. Um, I also attended the Park and Rec uh, board meeting and the Regional Park Improvement Fund Oversight Committee meeting. Um, some updates from them, um, Park and Rec Department will be integrated with the Get It Done app um, in approximately December when that's upgraded. Um, right now, I think it's sort of, reports get sort of shuffled around so that they will be directly integrated with that as some of the other departments are. So maybe we'll get some better response on reports to that department. Also with regard to our beach access, the Bermuda Stairs is almost done with the design phase and they think next quarter it may be ready to go out to bid. I don't have a timeline for when that might be actually constructed. I gave up hope on those sort of timelines. Um, also Santa Cruz access stairs and Narragansett access stairs. Some people may not be aware that those were on the radar. Those are in the planning phase right now and will enter the design phase next quarter most likely. Um, the way these things are funded, when they are ready for the next phase, they usually will, especially when they get to the design phase, they prioritize funding for these things because they don't want them to sit and have permits expire. So that's a good sign if these do make it into the design phase, that they will be seen all the way through. Um, I'm going to personally advocate for a couple ideas with regard to some of those stairs so we don't end up with more uh, beachfront uh, graffiti walls and, and open air urinals. So, but that's my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, do I have a report from any, anyone else? Anything going on? Tracy, Arts and Commission?
Arts and Commission, um, Arts and Culture. So uh, yeah, so I just want to tell everybody um, and remind everybody that San Diego does have a poet laureate program and that uh, this month, so our poet, poet laureate, Ron Salisbury, does these workshops uh, every few months. And the workshops are there to help you create and to learn and to get feedback on your poetry. So um, this month, uh, let's see, the Arts and Co-, or Commission for Arts and Culture is inviting you to learn, create and share your poems of resilience for a chance to be published in a special section of the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two San Diego Poetry Annual. Um, let's see, he is sharing the workshop this month with Jim Moreno, who is a local poet. And beginning on June fourth, you can register for this third workshop. And the poetry project is titled Poetic Contract Titles: The Poetic Line Poem Endings. So I will put a link to that in the chat and um, I'm also going to put, if anybody is interested in attending these commission meetings, they are one hundred percent public and they are all done on Zoom. And I'm also going to post a li-, uh, I'm going to post the times and the days when these commission meetings happen. There's the main commission meeting and then there's some uh, subcommittees that people might be interested in attending. So I'm, we had a little bit of time change things going on, so I'm going to post that as well in the chat and a link to uh, where you can go to view the full agenda and any meeting information and minutes. So that is it for Arts and Culture.
Thank you. And Virginia, I see your, oh, I see your hand is up. Hi Nick. Uh, do you have anything for forestry? I think you're still muted, Virginia.
I just had a report that our regularly scheduled Community Forest Advisory Board Meeting was canceled again last month. But today was the Regional Forest Council Meeting and uh, I would like to urge everyone to become aware of uh, the mature trees that we have surrounding us. There's always a lot of enthusiasm for tree plantings. We have Arbor Day celebrations. And everyone loves to see the little baby trees. But the older trees provide so many benefits of shade and, and environmental benefits to us that please be aware of any changes in a tree. If you notice uh, signs of beetles or uh, damage to a tree, please report it with Get It Done and have the city look at it, any tree that's on city property. And we'll try and save those trees whenever we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Okay, any final things? All right. I did want to say Laura, I'm so sorry I didn't get to your question in the chat for Brian, but I did immediately email it to him. So when I get that response, I will forward it to your email. I'm so sorry about that. Um, but if we don't have anything else, uh, I, I will adjourn this meeting at eight forty-two. Thank you. You're all great. I'll see you.
Thank you.
See you next month. Still two minutes under.
Thank you.